Italian. Do you like ethnic Italian?
I know, I like Indian.
All right, can you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. It is Tuesday, February fourteenth, Valentine's Day. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. We'll try and make this quick. We just came from executive session where we discussed fire contract negotiations and water company matters. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing on a local law amending Chapter 162 and Chapter 250, Section 4.1 of the Village Code concerning the construction and installation of oil burning equipment, gas burning equipment, and fuel storage tanks. So can I have a motion and second to open the public hearing?
So moved?
Second.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. And do we want a brief summary of that? I mean, I think we've been through this a few times already.
Sure, yeah, we've done this a few times. But basically, there's more of this type of equipment being located outside of homes. This local law regulates the exterior of any oil burning or gas fuel burning equipment or fuel storage tanks, and also for commercial districts and residential districts. And also requires that the equipment be co-located with his other equipment and that screening be provided around that type of equipment. And it gives some discretion to the building department based on the conditions in the field.
Great, thank you. I would say one thing that has changed since the last time we discussed this is that we did receive report and recommendation from the planning board that recommended that we pass it, adopt the law.
Yes.
So this being a public hearing, do we have any comments from the public? Do we have any comments from the board? Okay, so can I have a motion and second to close the public hearing, please?
Motion.
Second.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Thank you to everyone who worked on this. We'll move right into the resolution. Resolution number one, considering adopting a local law to amend Chapter 162 and Chapter 250, Section 4.1 of the Code of the Village of Rybrook concerning construction and installation of oil burning equipment, gas burning equipment, and fuel storage tanks.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees desires to regulate the location installation of fuel burning equipment, gas burning equipment, and fuel storage tanks in the same manner that the village currently regulates permanent standby generators. And whereas proposed local law was introduced in December to amend these chapters of the code concerning the construction and installation of these types of equipment. And whereas on December thirteenth, the Board of Trustees referred the local law to the Planning Board and the Westchester County Planning Board, Westchester County Planning Board and the Village Planning Board. And whereas the County Planning Board provided comments on January third, and the Village Planning Board provided a report and recommendation dated January twelfth. And whereas the Board of Trustees held a public hearing on the proposed local law on January twenty-fourth and continued on February fourteenth, at which time all those were interested and opportunity to be heard, and the public hearing was closed on February fourteenth. And whereas proposed local law is, and this action is an unlisted action pursuant to seeker. And whereas the Board of Trustees is fully familiar with the proposed local law, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rybrook, in accordance with seeker and upon review of the short environmental assessment form and other materials, hereby adopts the attached negative declaration for proposed local law, finding that the adoption of the local law will not result in any significant environmental impacts. And being further resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rybrook hereby adopts the proposed local law to amend Chapter 162 and Chapter 250 of the Code of the Village of Rybrook concerning the construction and installation of fuel, oil burning equipment, gas burning equipment, and fuel storage tanks.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any other further discussion?
We've discussed this out.
I think we have.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number two, considering the appointment of an administrative aide. Sorry, I'll get that out.
Now therefore be resolved that in accordance with the offer of appointment dated January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, Gregory Rivera of thirty-five fifteen Katrina Drive, Yorktown, is hereby appointed to the position of administrative aide with the Village of Rybrook, subject to the civil service procedures of the state of New York. And being further resolved that the annual salary is fifty-nine thousand, five-twenty, with a effective start date of February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Is he allowed to call the roll?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes, congratulations.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes, congratulations.
Trustee Heiser?
No, it's a coincidence because we already have an employee named Gregory Rivera. And so this is only the second one. But yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, congratulations.
Congratulations, Greg. He's doing a great job for us. He works really, he's a really hard worker. And, you know, he's really working closely with all the departments and the village board and just doing a great job, great job helping me out on large projects, small projects, and all the above.
Thank you, Greg. We appreciate all your work.
Sure, of course.
Good evening. Happy Valentine's Day, of course, to everybody. But again, I just want to say thank you to all of you, of course, for, I cannot believe it's been already more than a year. But I can't thank everybody enough, including the board members. We have an administrator, Brad Barry. Of course, I can't thank you enough for giving me the opportunity to work for the Village of Rybrook. It really is a great place to work and a great community to serve and all the residents and all the village employees that we have. It can really is a team effort. And of course, I almost forgot, Council DeMarco too. But, and everyone from our consultants to our residents, to our advisory councils. Again, this is a community that in large part because the success relies on everyone coming together and working together. And that's something that I've always held dear to my heart. So this community was and continues to be a great fit for me. So I just look forward to continuing to serve. And I look forward to continuing to work with you guys, the board, and the rest of the community at large.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's after a day of budget meetings, too.
All right, resolution number three, considering the reappointment of Joan Feinstein to the Town of Rye Board of Assessment Review.
Whereas there's an existing agreement between the Town of Rye and the villages of Rybrook and Portchester describing the method of appointment for members of the Town of Rye Board of Assessment Review. And whereas in accordance with this agreement, in June two thousand nineteen, Joan Feinstein was appointed to the Board of Assessment Review to fill in the balance of the term previously held by Milt Meiskin that was scheduled to expire on September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. And whereas the village board recommends the reappointment of Joan Feinstein to the Board of Assessment Review as the Rybrook Designated Member for a new five-year term that began on October first, two thousand twenty-two. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby recommends that Joan Feinstein of Four Robins Roost, Rybrook, New York, to serve as the Rybrook Designated Member to the Town of Rye Board of Assessment Review for a five-year term that began on October first, two thousand twenty-two, in accordance with the IMA between the Town of Rye and the villages of Rybrook and Portchester.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved? Second.
I would thank Joan and Mayor Feinstein for stepping up to help out the village in this way and volunteering her time again.
Chris, did my hearing aids malfunction? Or did you say Four Robins Roost, when in fact it's Six Robins Roost?
Ah.
Ah, good catch.
Thank you.
No, the resolution has it correctly.
Not this one. This one says four.
No, mine says, mine says six.
I have four, so we'll correct it.
All right.
She's at six.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Yay.
Good catch, yes.
Good credit my hearing aids.
How are those?
They're just one in each ear. That's great.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes, thank you, Joan.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you again. Resolution number four, considering approving use of the village streets for the two thousand twenty-three Wall Street Rides FAR, the For Autism Research Event.
Now therefore be resolved that, subject to the final approval of the Rybrook Police Department, the Autism Science Foundation is authorized to use the Village of Rybrook streets for the two thousand twenty-three Wall Street Rides FAR or For Autism Research Charity Bike Event on Saturday, September thirtieth, requested in a letter dated February first, two thousand twenty-three. And being further resolved, the village streets shall be used in compliance with the terms and conditions established by the police department.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
This is an annual event. It seems to have minimal impact on us.
Yes. I don't even think they close the streets. I think they keep them open and ride through.
Because I think they're far enough spaced by the time they get to us. And so we appreciate the ability to be able to participate in this.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments?
No, I think it's great. It's good.
Just so you know, it's a, it can be a sixty-two mile ride.
Yeah.
So people will be going multiple times. Is that what that is?
I think there's different routes that they take.
So if it's, it can be. Because I mean, we could just join in the last mile.
That won't be in Rybrook.
That's right.
There's a five-page walk option.
Like a Rosie Ruiz and just show up at the end.
Catch the subway for most of it.
Exactly. My specialty.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that the residents are made aware of it, where they do cross in Rybrook.
We can send like an email blast prior to it. It's not until September, but we have, yeah, we'll make sure we do.
Email blast time.
Just make sure that they're aware of it because sometimes we get a little flack for that.
Sure.
Trustee Epstein, I'll also do social media posts too, just as a reminder.
Thank you so much.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number five, considering a contract with Educational Services Commission of New Jersey for a cooperative purchasing agreement.
Whereas Educational Commission of New Jersey, or ESCJN, governments and acronyms, allows for municipalities to purchase a multitude of equipment, parts, and services. And whereas the Village of Rybrook desires to contract with ESCJNJ for the use of their cooperative purchasing agreement in a manner so as to assure the prudent and economical use of public monies. And being further resolved, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves an agreement with ESCJNJ for the use of their cooperative purchasing agreement. And being further resolved, the mayor and administrator are authorized to sign and execute said agreement.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved? Second.
Thank you again to Michael Nowak, who continues to find these crazy places to buy things.
We can find the lowest prices.
Wherever we can. It helps, especially now in budget season.
Yes, it does.
So thank you, Michael, for continuing to look out for the financial interest of the village.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes, thank you, Michael.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Heiser? Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering an addendum to iNavigator ACA Dashboard User License Agreement with Marshall &amp; Sterling.
Okay. Whereas on June twelfth, June twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approved an agreement with Marshall &amp; Sterling Inc. for a web-based application of Navigator Dashboard Program for employee tracking and reporting concerning the Affordable Care Act and related services. And whereas, under the terms of the agreement, agreed to provide these services to assist in compliance with the Affordable Care Act for an annual cost of six thousand dollars per year. And whereas the Village of Rybrook received a notice on February seventh from Marshall &amp; Sterling that there'll be a price increase of five hundred dollars effective this billing cycle for a total price of sixty-five hundred dollars. And whereas the price increase will require an addendum to the original agreement by the mayor and the village of Rybrook. And whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to retain these services provided by them, and there will therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the addendum for the iNavigator ACA Dashboard User Agreement with Marshall &amp; Sterling to authorize the price increase to retain employee tracking and reporting services concerning the ACA. And being further resolved, the mayor and administrator authorized to sign any documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Second.
I think, you know, this is minimal and it's been a while for you, a number of years since they have asked. So I think we're okay with this.
Yes.
I have a question. And I just thought about this. We have a risk manager. Do they offer these services also?
Not directly through our risk management services. That's more for insurance and loss control.
Right, but they're insurance brokers.
We can ask them.
I think that would be helpful because I think that...
So before we sign the agreement, I will talk to them. I'll talk to them about the offering of that service and try to get a price and see how it compares before we sign it.
That is fine because I know that if they're insurance brokers, every insurance broker has this capability right now.
Okay.
Because it's a, it's mostly a software-driven thing. I did a little snooping today on the internet while looking at it. And I know that we hire FOA.
We do.
Right.
We'll contact them and we will ask them if they provide it. We'll get a price if they do. And if it's comparable, then we may bring this back to you. And if not, then we'll, if the board approves, we'll execute it.
Great, thank you.
Sounds good.
So if you don't mind adding the resolution, just say, provided that our risk manager is unable to provide the same value for this service.
As amended.
So motion, second, as amended?
Second.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes, thank you, Chris.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, and thank you for that suggestion. Shall see whether we can get something better. Resolution number seven, considering an agreement with Cablevision LightPath Inc. and the Village of Rybrook for an ELON connection system.
This is a very confusing resolution with a lot of references because basically this is a series of agreements that are in place that we're modifying. So whereas the, long story short, at the end of the day, what we're doing is providing a connection for our police communication system. But I'll read it through. So the County of Westchester and Cablevision LightPath entered into an agreement dated July twenty-sixth, pursuant to which agreement, they agreed to provide the County of Westchester and interested participants, including the Village of Rybrook, with certain telecommunications services pursuant to a price schedule and volume discounts set forth in a five-year agreement. And whereas the County of Westchester and Cablevision LightPath subsequently entered into a First Amendment to Agreement in July tenth, two thousand twenty, which extended the term by another five years to two thousand twenty-five and made certain amendments to that agreement, including but not limited to modified pricing and volume discounts, and also making additional services available. And whereas the Village of Rybrook, as an interested participant, seeks to obtain certain telecommunications services from Cablevision LightPath pursuant to that agreement as governed by and subject to the agreement and the First Amendment, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rybrook, as an interested participant, hereby approves the telecommunications service obtained by the Village of Rybrook from Cablevision LightPath pursuant to a service order as governed and subject to the agreement and the First Amendment. And being further resolved, the mayor and administrator are authorized to sign any documents necessary for this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so all of that is something that took a lot, just to summarize what this is. So, and thanks to Ralph DeMarco of Keenan Bean for navigating through all the agreements to see exactly what we need to do to put that in place. But long story short, this is to purchase an ELAN connection for, which is necessary for our new MTA radio system.
That's what I was going to ask you.
Yes.
It's all part of that new system, right?
Part of that system.
Yeah.
We're able to use the volume discounts through the LightPath agreement.
Right, okay.
They also have, just so you know, the customer billing account name is Village of Rybrook Treasurers Office. Treasurers.
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 Plural.
Okay. When will that, when's this all going to take effect with our new equipment?
It's all taking effect this year. I mean, Portchester's already live. Rybrook has gotten their equipment in place.
Oh, they got it.
And we've gotten some of our equipment. And we're just putting all the rest of the connections in place.
So by August, you think?
I don't want to commit to that, but I'd say sometime over the summer. But we'll be running redundant systems for a while, too.
Great, great.
Some of it has to do with the delivery issues that are involved.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Uh, yeah, yes, please, thank you.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eight, considering a stipend for a senior office assistant office manager.
Whereas Rose DeScully, senior office assistant office manager, has been assisting the Treasury Department since January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, due to temporary staff shortage. And whereas the Village of Rybrook wishes to compensate her while performing these additional responsibilities, now therefore be resolved that effective January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, senior office assistant office manager Rose DeScully shall be provided a stipend of two hundred and fifty dollars per paycheck for additional responsibilities assisting the Treasury Department until such time as these services are no longer needed due to those staffing shortages.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second. I would just say thank you to Rose for stepping up into this.
It's a big help.
Especially at this time of year, it's been tough.
Yes.
And we really appreciate all the help she's been giving.
We'll share that with her.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Yes. Thank you to Rose once again. Trustee Epstein?
Thank you, Rose, yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. And we have two add-on resolutions. Resolution number nine, considering setting a public hearing amending Chapter one thirteen, Article two, Section four of the Village Code to establish registration requirements for deputized electrical inspectors.
Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, and the proposed local law amending Chapter one thirteen, Article two, Section four of the Village Code to establish registration requirements for deputized electrical inspectors.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Second.
Okay, so let me explain what this is. So over the years, pretty much every, all municipalities, except for some of the larger, largest municipalities who have their own electrical inspectors, basically you create a list of electrical inspection companies that can provide electrical services to verify that the electrical work was done correctly by the contractor. They are essentially representing the municipality. So when they go out there, so that's why we have to authorize who can do, provide the service. There's a series of companies that are out there doing that. One of the companies that was probably the most popular company that we had, the most frequent one that was used, we had two companies last year. That company that was most frequently used has now retired, the person's retired. They're out of the company, is now no longer there. So we only have one company. So we'd like to offer it now to additional companies. But we also want the opportunity to have a registration process where they can be interviewed, experienced, because they are representing us. So this is the separate outside electrical firms that review the work and essentially represent us. So we need to make sure they have the insurances and they have all the criteria. So that's why we are, rather than just kind of put it out there, like most communities, we'll just put it out there and authorize, the building inspector will authorize who can do it. We want to have a process to have in place that is clear to everybody and everybody have the same opportunities.
Okay, makes sense. So this is a process to hire several different companies to potentially do the service.
And then the residents will choose which one they want from that list of firms.
So we, how do we amass this list where they come to us?
They'd have to come to us with an application to be, represent us for electrical inspectors as an electrical inspection company. And then we would interview, get their background information. And then if they get authorized, then residents would pick from that list. Right now, they pick from less.
Wouldn't be the resident, be the electrical contractor that would pick, really, right? That's typical.
We would pick the, we would say which companies are authorized to do the work.
Right. Choose from that list.
Residents would pick from that list of companies that are authorized.
Going to be an endless list or are you going to call and pick a few?
There's only like four, what, what is there, four companies maybe? Three or four companies out there?
There's not many out there. But there should be a broad number. It's good to...
For residents, it's up to them to pick the company, which is what, which is what it's been in the past.
Well, no. What has been in the past is the electrical contractor would hire whatever electrical inspector company out there. Wouldn't be the homeowner, it would be the contractor that...
Technically, it's the homeowner, but it's because they're the ones who are paying for it. But it's, yeah.
It's the billing of the electrical contractor.
Yes, yes. But the resident, it's really the homeowner's choice at the end of the day, if they don't want to take the company. But in the past, as Trustee Morino said, probably electrical contractors can tell them who they, which one you should use. But they can't use them without being authorized to work.
Exactly. There's a list that the municipality has that says, these are the three we are qualified to do.
They're qualified to represent. Because essentially what they're doing is they're signing off on the electrical work that was completed.
Absolutely.
And that's what's going in our file as proof that that was inspected.
Right, of course.
Yeah, we want to make sure that they have, you know, they didn't just start last month and that they have the right insurance to back it up and haven't had any problems in other communities, that kind of thing.
Right, and we talked about having our own electrical inspector, Right, and we talked about having our own electrical inspector, but we're not that busy enough to really maybe do that yet.
Yeah, we were thinking about that, and I even reached out to, did a, reached out to all my colleagues about it, and really, the only ones who are doing that are the largest, like cities that have their own full-time electrical inspectors.
Right, exactly. White Plains, right, exactly. Okay, sounds good.
And this way people have choices.
They should, rightfully so.
How does the billing work?
The billing goes, the residents pay directly to the electrical inspector, so it doesn't have to be added to our fee schedule. But we'll have an application fee for the inspector.
Right. Okay, so it'll be based on our fee?
The fees are done by the electrical company.
So it would vary?
Part of the process, they have to provide us with a list of their costs.
Okay.
Of what they charge.
So we will provide that to our residents?
Whoever asks, we'll have a copy of what they gave us.
Okay.
That's part of the application process, is to provide their, again, their background, proof of insurance, municipal references, and also a list of what their fees are.
Okay.
It's probably an hourly fee, so it's still an.
I don't know if the fee structures are built, we'll have to ask. It might even be by per outlets.
Per, yeah.
All right, again, this is just setting the public hearing.
Yeah.
Right. Just want to understand it. Thank you.
There's only a few that have it in our local law, but we think it just makes sense to make it really clear for everybody, here's what the rules are, and I think that's the fairest way to do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I like that.
When are we setting it for?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number 10, considering general fund budget transfer to purchase a replacement salter.
Oh.
Ooh.
You don't need that this year, I hope.
I hope this doesn't jinx us.
It's still early.
I think if everybody goes out with their salt shaker in front of the property.
I hope this doesn't jinx us, that's all. Very simple resolution.
This is like carrying the umbrella, so it won't rain. Getting the salter, so it won't snow.
Be resolved that the following budget transfer is hereby approved for the 2022, 2003 operating budget. So this is from general central garage equipment account in the amount of ninety-two thousand, ninety-two hundred thirty-four dollars to the highway maintenance equipment. It's just getting it to the right account, is nine thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars. It's equal amount.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
I'm moved. Second.
Administrator's report?
Yeah, we had basically a circuit, we lost our whole circuit board on one of our current salters. That's why it wasn't anticipated, but luckily, we do, we're trying to use funds that we have existing rather than contingency or anything else, so we're transferring from another account.
Maybe we can get a good price on one of those.
Want to transfer out of the salt account?
Right.
That would be jinxing it.
You could, but.
And I'm betting that this is one of the things that Mike found through one of the connections.
Pennsylvania, I think you found.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, so he's so good.
Yeah, this was one of Mike's, yeah, because we got three, we found three different quotes and three different vendors, and this was a great deal out in Pennsylvania. I think we have to go get it, but it's worth it for the.
This is a used piece of.
No, it's new.
It doesn't have an eagle sticker on it, does it?
Not that I know of.
If it saves thousands of dollars, we'll take the sticker.
This came.
Paint over the sticker.
No, we have to have some pride.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes, thank you, Michael.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Administrator's report?
Let's have a few items. One, I just want to alert everyone, and I put this in the board packet last week, that one of the things in the governor's executive budget that was proposed is a concern to municipalities, and we heard this up at a meeting I went to up in NICOM last Sunday, was this New York Housing Compact proposal. So I just want to alert that that's something we should keep an eye on. There was a similar proposal last year that was, that did not move, but there is, so basically what this law would require, if this executive budget item would require, which is that you need to, there's, there's definitely a need for more housing in New York State, but there's, there's a concern there's not enough housing for the amount of jobs that are there. So there, the government really wants to create items that allow for more housing, and they're creating what they call these safe harbor communities, and as part of that, you, people that are served by the Long Island Railroad or Metro North would have to build, have a 3% increase in housing units over a three-year period. It's 1% increase over three years if you're not served by those two train areas. In order to not have that occur, then you need, so then if you don't do that, then the, the state will, if you either don't increase your housing by 3%, or if you don't approve two of, predefined, two of five predefined preferred actions, like requiring that there be accessible apartment, I'm sorry, accessory apartments and things like that, if you don't approve legislation in two of five defined areas or have a 3% increase, then there's, then developers would be able to bypass local zoning and be able to build certain developments, you know, high-rise, things like that, particularly around train stations. So this is a concern to local municipalities, one, because it's not typical for the state to mandate that type of an approach. So it's something that we want to keep an eye on, and by allowing to bypass local zoning is not typical. So something to keep an eye on, it's something that's a concern. There's definitely a need for more housing in most, much of the area, but the question is, there might be better ways of going about it. And I think that's really the tone that I heard from all the municipalities up at NICOM.
Chris?
Yes.
What does it mean to be served by the railroad?
It basically means anywhere that's my, what I heard from NICOM, we would be included, even though we don't have a train station here, the area is still served by that in the region of the, of the, of the, of the trains.
In other words, if you're proximate to the train station?
Yeah, if you have access to New York City, jobs in New York City, things like that.
I think when I did some of the reading, it said there were bans, and if you're five to 10 miles, 10 to 20, 20 to 25, and we did that, one of that ban. So I think that's what they're targeting.
Yep.
But that effectively takes away our zoning.
It's very unusual to have something like a mandate that would bypass zoning.
And it represents another unfunded mandate, though same as the, the, the 2% tax cap has been in many, many other unfunded mandates of Albany handing down to the municipalities, but not backing it up with the financial support that's been promised. And this, this to me would be, as you said, even more egregious, because you're, you're bypassing our zoning laws, which is, which, you know, this.
Yeah, and I think we've done a lot on housing.
This is a home rule state.
And this is any type of housing, you know, just, you know, affordable housing would count two times. So if you need to build, say, 100 homes, if you built 50 affordable housing, then that would qualify as 100. Otherwise, it would be 100, you know, market rate.
And I guess there's no look back?
Nope, no look back. No look back.
Wow.
So something to keep an eye on, you know, right now it's in an executive budget, hasn't been approved by anybody yet, but the legislators I've all heard from are all been, expressed concerns about it.
So this came up during her meeting with all of the local politicians, yes?
No, no, this came up in the, the executive budget that was presented by the governor. And then in the local meetings we had with NICOM, that's when they go through the executive budget and kind of give summaries of what's included in it. And by far, this was the, the lead topic from NICOM.
Right, I would imagine. So has she been getting any pushback since it's become public?
I couldn't answer that.
I'm sure.
Do we have to write a letter?
I'm sure.
No, it's more, NICOM's taking a lead for, for, on our behalf. They may ask for residents' of support as it goes forward, but we'll keep an eye on it.
Remember that this is a proposed executive budget, which then gets worked by the legislature.
The odd part of New York, as we all know, there's items that end up in a budget that aren't really financially, aren't budgetary.
Policy.
That's what, it unfortunately happens too much in New York State, that there's items, a lot of items in budgets that are not strictly financial or, or budgetary.
Thank you.
Okay, other items. Westchester County has said the, is going to be just some modifications to the solid waste transfer station in White Plains, and that's going to be for the entire month of March. What that means to us is that our garbage and paper are going to have to be brought to Mount Vernon rather than right to White Plains. So there's a potential that there could be, with the additional travel and more people going to that facility, we may have some, you know, delayed pickups from when a normal time is. So, you know, may just take people, them longer to drop off and get back again. So things will, might be off, for that month, might be off a little bit on the normal pattern of pickup times. The police department got, received a $60,000 grant from the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services for new body worn cameras. So that was good news. And lastly, just today, we had a really nice function at their senior center for Valentine's Day. We had over 100 people, which was quite a turnout.
Wow.
And it was just great to see so many, you know, people who are happy to be there. They had some nice music, and it was just a really nice event. So, great job by Liz and her whole team, and Greg, who helped out as well. They asked for his help because they had such a big crowd. So it was really a nice event. It was a lot of fun. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chris. And thanks to Liz for all that great work that she does down there.
Yes.
Amazing, 100 people. All right, so we have one item of old business, one item of new business. The old business is the Osborne Place Parking. We had discussed this, it had been a new business item, a discussion item, that we had in Village Park, I forget when. Oh, December 13th, it says there. And then we had made, well, we had asked for report and recommendation from the Traffic Commission, and they did come back with those recommendations. They were recommending no change.
They recommended no change, so the question is, does the board want to, you know, continue with a public hearing, or does the board want to get closure and say, accept the recommendations? We're just trying to move this one way or the other. We got a recommendation to not make any change from the, the current, the current recommendation. Actually, we approved that one during the public hearing, so that was just the no parking area. So this has to do with, they were asking for additional changes, and the question is, does the board want to consider those additional changes or not? Because we don't have a local law drafted for those other changes.
Right. Yeah, I, I think, you know, my personal opinion is that, you know, really the only ones that I still would consider potentially is the Dome Mirror. You know, I think we heard compelling arguments why a lot of those changes should not be made. And I know we had talked about potentially trying to act as a bridge, putting them in touch with the shopping center there. I don't know if anything's been done.
And we're happy to reach out to the shopping center, at least try to facilitate a discussion there. Obviously, that's not something we can impose, that's something that's voluntary. But some of the members, some of the items that were talked about was restricting some of the parking on Bowman Avenue. Also, no, 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 on Bowman, not on, we, we already restricted part of it, but remember, they talked about doing, I think, alternate side, and we also talked about the dome, and we talked about the striping.
What they do is move, like the sign, like on the right side.
We did that.
Yes.
We did that for more visual.
Yeah, sightline, for better sightline.
Well, we did that, but then there was some additional things about moving the parking. And then it was also about doing maybe striping of spaces, but to allow for the access to those walkways. But the Traffic Commission recommended that there was, take away too many spaces. So it's a question of, now you have a recommendation not to do anything additional, so the question is, does the board want to do anything additional or accept the recommendations of the Traffic Commission?
I think that we can, I think that the one thing that we haven't done is reach out to the commercial owners, so perhaps we should put this on pause before we speak with them. Maybe that's a solution.
Well, but that's not, that's not anything that we'd be taking action on. That's just.
So I can reach out to them and just try to facilitate a discussion on that, but it's not something you'd have, and I can report back what the feedback is. But that would, as the mayor said, that wouldn't necessitate any other, that wouldn't require any action on our behalf.
Yeah.
Right.
So this would allow them more parking during the winter months when there's no parking, correct?
What would?
This parking, this resolution here that we're, that they want to deal with the Osborne.
Well, there is no resolution, so we approved, we, all right, let me start over. So we, at that meeting, we approved some parking modifications for, to improve some of the sightlines at Bowman Avenue.
Okay, which was?
Basically, some of the signs had been removed. We also allowed no parking.
Yes, I remember that, okay.
On the south side of Osborne.
Yeah.
Because remember, there was some, there was a code missed that they need to include it on the south side.
Right, right.
And then what happened now is then the residents came, they said, we still are having trouble with parking, and they explained, you know, not, some of the people from the shopping center park on the side streets. Some commercial vehicles are going through there that aren't in our community, that they're going through to the properties in Portchester that are off of Osborne, but they have to access it through. And there were some other recommendations that were made. They said they can't get into their walkways in front of their, like the mail, people delivering mail or deliveries. It's hard for them to get through because their sidewalks are blocked. So one of the suggestions was perhaps creating like striped parking spaces, but that could obviously, they have to be able with, you'd probably lose parking in the long run. So that's, all those items were items that were reviewed by the Traffic Commission. Their recommendation was not to do any village required changes under our code to, for those items.
Right, and then this map it shows here proposed winter parking.
Yeah.
That's something.
The maps, that's already been addressed.
Okay, so they're parking, okay, good. All right. Give them a lot of, to give them the opportunity. I mean, they may not like the fact that it'd be difficult to plow there. Plow trucks are going to come in there, winter parking, and they're going to say, we can't plow this street.
We've been, actually, what they've been doing on the south side is allowing it anyhow. They've been doing it already.
And it's been working.
And it's been working, okay. Well, one resident has, has said no, but the other ones have been in favor.
In favor. All right, so they've been able to clear the street best they can, right?
But there is a parking issue there. You know, a lot of the homes are built at a time that people didn't have as many cars as they have now.
Right.
Right.
And, and some places, yeah.
And there's that commercial company in the back, and that's the only access.
Is to go through Rybrook.
It's insane. I mean, huge trucks going back there.
There's no other pass-through for that?
No.
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 They can't go to that parking lot?
If we catch it in the act, we can issue a ticket, because commercial vehicles are not allowed on that street through Rybrook.
But if you've gone down there, and if you look left, there's commercial vehicles parked.
Correct.
So how else could they get down there?
There's only one way to get there. But the, the police have, still have to issue the ticket, and they have to be able to see that they're driving through Rybrook. They can't issue a ticket in Portchester.
Oh, right, it's Portchester.
Yeah.
I mean, there's tons of those commercial vehicles that are parked.
So we're trying, but, you know, we've made some changes that will help. We can facilitate, try to be, talk to the, the shopping center and explain some of the patrons there are parking, when there's no parking in the lot, that they're parking on Osborne. Maybe that will help. He'll be more understanding to alleviate some of the parking by allowing them to go overnight.
Right. I think that would really be the critical factor.
So we'll do that.
I don't think it's parking during the day that is as much an issue as when they come home.
Yeah.
But remember, those businesses are still open when people are getting.
Yeah, there are restaurants and, yeah.
But they were during the day complaining about the fact that their sidewalks were being blocked.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Well, now it's going to be blocked with cars.
Right. So I think, it sounds like we're probably in agreement with, we're going to go with the recommendations.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
But I'll reach out to the shopping center.
I think I'm agree.
Okay?
Thank you.
So then we have one item of new business, and that is that the Doral Greens Homeowners' Association has requested a potential local law regarding lawn maintenance on vacant properties. So, Chris, you want, or?
Sure, yeah, I can give an overview.
Overview?
Okay, so up until last, I think it was 2021, don't hold me that, but I think it was early 2021, the state code, the state building codes required that vacant properties maintain basically grass and weeds at a point that's anything less than, anything higher than 10 inches would, is a, is a violation. Because it was a state code and not a, you know, we couldn't adopt something more stringent. But what happened in 2021, and, and it's been an issue where we've talked to Doral Arrowood when it got longer. They have, then they, at one point it was higher, the ground was wet, they did come in and cut it, and afterwards did maintain it, but at times, the grounds definitely has exceeded the 10 inches. It's a, it's a hard way to get, oh, after, because as you know, once we issue a violation under the state code, the property owner also has 30 days to cure. But it's a, it becomes a hard thing to do as the growing season comes. What changed in 2020, early 2021, is the state building, the state code was modified to say that the, a local municipality can adapt, adopt a more stringent local law for vacant properties. So that is what the Doral Greens Association is essentially asking, is that, that the village consider a local law with something less than the state code in terms of height, and that, that that be enacted as local legislation, which could be enforced by the building department. So that's the request by the Doral Greens, Arrow's homeowners association, and also what's changed since 2020.
So, and I think we have representatives from the homeowners association here, as well as from Doral Arrowood, so.
I think Mr. Noto was asked to represent the HOA?
Please.
And right now, just to be clear, there is no local, no local law drafted. This is on as a discussion in reply to the letter that was put on.
And thank you. Good evening. Great to be here. And I'll talk about the airport. So, my name is Paul Noto. I, I am the chair of the Real Estate Committee at Doral Greens, and Dave Russo is the president, who wrote you the letter. He cannot be here tonight. So he asked me to come on his behalf, and quite frankly, I could not have summed it up better than Chris, and I thank you for doing that. We, we did have a bad experience last year. As you know, there are, you know, we live next door to Doral Arrowood. It is considered a vacant property under the law, and it has been vacant for a number of years. And so last year, there was, you know, there are five holes of the former golf course that runs through our property. So, you know, we are inextricably intertwined with this property. And so last year, it was not maintained. It got over 10 inches. Now, as you can imagine, in the spring, you know, it's not just an aesthetic problem, it's a health hazard. You know, you have rodents there, you have people with hay fever and asthma. I mean, it's just, it really exacerbates a bad problem. And the prior board had, you know, asked the owner at the time to do it. You know, we didn't get great response. And then Chris intervened on our behalf. And of course, as you know, there's over 200 people that live there, so if you had a higher standard, it also is to your benefit, so that Chris wouldn't have to field phone calls in the spring and summer from 200 angry residents saying, why is this grass not getting cut? But beyond that, I mean, beyond, you know, our parochial view, I think, you know, looking at some other communities, I noticed Portchester is at 6 inches, I think for the community. This, this is a beautiful community. We take great pride in the fact that this is really an attractive community. Fortunately, you don't have a lot of vacant properties, which is, again, a benefit to Rybrook. So, you know, this would not generate a lot of extra work for the building department. But I think if you had a standard at 6 inches or 5 inches, I think that benefits the whole community. It's not just about us. And I think it sends the right message to the community that, that the board, you know, you know, takes beautification seriously, again, not just for aesthetics, but for public health. And so we would urge you, now that you can, and we've had this conversation, we, you know, done a little research, and, you know, really grateful to Chris for, for going that extra mile, and, you know, finding that we could, could do this. I, I had thought we could, you know, but, you know, we needed to hear from Chris. And, you know, we think it'd be a benefit to the entire community to, to, you know, set a high bar here. And we think 6 inches would be appropriate, consistent with neighboring communities, and, you know, wouldn't cost the community anything. I think it's, you know, it's cost-effective, and I think it's a, a, a good message for the board to send. So I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
And we also have a representative from Doral Arrowood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, staff. Brett Schwartzman, the law firm of Zarenstein. First, I want to apologize for my attire tonight. I, I came dressed to go to work today to think I was going to take my family out for dinner this evening.
Oh.
We just found out about this meeting and this issue this afternoon, so that's why I'm not in a jacket, not in a suit, so.
And you missed Valentine's Day dinner.
Oh, you're in trouble. And you missed Valentine's dinner.
I was still going for the nightcap. I might just be staying on a podium, not in a suit and jacket, so I just wanted to mention that. So we represent Cohen Purchase Building Company, the owner of the Doral Arrowood site. Just got this letter this afternoon. We will provide some substantive feedback and comments to the village. At first blush, we're just not sure that this is necessary. And just to clarify, whatever problems existed in the past, right, the to clarify, whatever problems existed in the past, right, the last two years, this referenced in the letter, my client just acquired the property early last year, our client took the aesthetic beautification of the property seriously, as Mr. Bradbury alluded to, our client did cut and maintain the lawn, the only issue, again, as you mentioned earlier, that came up at the beginning, was the timing, right, because of the, the rains and the wet grounds last spring, our client's landscaper had advice to wait until the ground had dried some before the cutting took place, so, yes, there was a little discussion and issue at the beginning, I said the exact timing of the cutting, but ultimately, with, with Mr. Bradbury's assistance, we did it, our client did it, cut the grass, maintained it, so the reasonableness standard that's currently in your code, we're not quite sure why this necessitates a village-wide amendment to something that's clearly directed at, at our site, so that's our initial reaction, and wanted just to clarify again, that whatever problems may have occurred previously with the prior owner is certainly different than, I think, what, what transpired last spring with, with our client, who takes very seriously the attractiveness of the site and wanting to be a good neighbor both with the HOA and the village, so ultimately, maintain the property now, and ultimately come up with a great plan for the redevelopment of the property.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Dinner.
I guess that dessert's waiting.
So can I, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the, the current code about the reasonableness standard is, doesn't really apply for vacant properties, so in order to be, if you wanted to do something to assert the state code, you would have to do a modification for, specifically for vacant properties, that's my understanding of it, again, I'm not an attorney, but that's, that's my understanding. I will say this, I think that if, before the board considers whether or not to approve a local law, I would ask if there's an openness from both the Doral Greens HOA and Doral Arrowood to meet with, you know, my office or maybe some of the board members, to come up with a plan that may be in writing that people can live with, the reason I say that is it might be in everybody's interest to do that, simply because the code process, again, can be a little, a lot longer than for us to enforce through the courts, rather than if we get something in writing. I'm throwing that out there to see if there's a reaction to do that, to me, that would worth, be worth a two-week, we have time before the summer, there might, if there's a, an openness for all three groups, the village, the Doral Arrowood and Doral Greens, to come up with something that everyone can agree to in writing, that everyone could say, this is the standard we want to try to get to in the summer, that type of an arrangement, I think, would be more efficient and more protected, and if that doesn't work, then there could be an opportunity to modify the law, but that's a suggestion that I would have, if there's openness on all the sides.